Call to order, this meeting of the Saguas School Committee, February 1st, 2024. Stephanie, will you lead us in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the public school community. We are a family of individuals with a belief in justice for all.
Here.
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 Here. Before we start, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Whittridge.
All right, this is a tough one for me. I know a lot of you guys know the Miranda family in town. So, the mom, Janine, lost her tough, tough battle with cancer. It's been a while. They got two kids in here, they got a sixth grader and a seventh grader. And kids need their mom. I'm sorry, the kids need their mom. They can do without us, they can do without the dads, but they need their mom. And when the moms can't be there, I'll tell you what, you guys all rallied around me and my family, and it meant the world to me, watching my kids go through it, and I can't bear to see the Miranda kids go through the same thing. So, I just really would ask, as a community, that we show them the same love that we've showed everybody down the line. They're just a good family, they're involved with Little League and softball and Papua Na, cheerin', basketball, you name it, there's not a Miranda that's not there. So, it's, yeah, it's a tough one for all of us. I see some faces in the crowd right now, which a couple of them I can't look at because I know we're probably all gonna start crying. Yeah, so just keep them in, keep that feeling in your prayers, please, and I'll just ask that we have a moment of silent meditation for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tom.
Moving on to the report of the committee chair, I just want to start tonight is, I'm sure we got a lot of public comment, and just, so you know, just can't get, can't talk about personnel and names and stuff, but I just want to touch on quickly what happened at the middle school the other day. And first, I want to thank Mr. Hashem, Superintendent, Principal, Principal Mr. Sullivan, and the Saguas Police Department for their quick response and addressing the problem the way it should be addressed. With this being said, I think there's a bigger issue here that we really need to address. I think, from what I'm hearing, the parents have been communicating with the district and with the complex, and it seems like those have fallen, that those things have fallen on deaf ears, and we really, we really need to look at what we're doing and what we're doing for the parents. Things like this shouldn't happen, especially if they're voicing their concerns, their concerns, their concerns, they need to be identified, they need to be responded to. So, in a timely fashion, it's just, it's not hard, and this is the thing that frustrates me, is we talk about it, and tomorrow comes, and next week comes, and then it's the next thing, and it seems like I'm up here again, saying to the parents, geez, I'm sorry, we should have done better. This frustrates me, I think it frustrates all of us, and I know, speaking for the board, things will change, things will change, so, thank you, thank you for that time. So, move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do, I'll just, since you mentioned it, I do want to say it's with a heavy heart that I acknowledge the incident that occurred, and I do understand that it has impacted us, a lot of us, in many different ways, and especially after what Mr. Whittridge said today as well, this kind of all ties in. I want to assure you that the well-being and the safety of our students, staff, and community members are our utmost priorities. That being said, I want to emphasize the importance of us coming together as a community during these challenging times. We encourage everyone to reach out for support if they need it, whether it's through trusted friends, family, community resources, or professional assistance. As we move forward, let us remember the values of compassion, understanding, and solidarity that define our community. Together, we can support each other and work together, healing and towards a positive change. I just wanted to say that, and with what you said about the Miranda family, I think it ties in as well. I'm very proud to be a member of the community, and I do think we do rally around each other very well during these times, so I did want to say that. The only other thing, and I really don't have much of a report other than that, I did want to share with the school committee members, and it's one of the things on the agenda, I did share with you the same annual report and budget that I'm required to you. It's not something you have to vote on, it's something I pass along to you, and you have it, I put it in the shared drive. I did want to mention the town meeting forum in the library, and I see some town meeting members here tonight. It was nice to present with Mr. Serino and other members of the community to go through what the budget process entails, it's a long, drawn-out ordeal. We're at the early stages, and hopefully, again, my sentiments continue. I hope we come together as a community to do what's best for us as a community and our students as well. And the last thing I want to say is that, what we're gonna, what do you have in front of you, and I want to make sure everybody has it, but when it comes up on the agenda item, is that I gave you copies of three options for the school calendar, when it comes up on the agenda. I do want to mention that you don't have to vote on that tonight, we're just trying to be proactive and make sure we give people enough time to know when we're gonna go back to school, when the vacations are, and I think most importantly, to most people, around what day they get out in June, provided there's no snow days. So, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Perfect. Moving on to the finance report, Sandra's.
Thank you. I just want to give you a quick little update. These reports that I shared with you are as of December 31st, 2023, which marks halfway through the fiscal year. If you look at the actual to budget, you will see that Saguas Public Schools has expended and encumbered $14,423,674.93, and you see the percentage of budget remaining as 54%.
Where are we seeing this?
Is it on the drive?
I don't have anything.
In the shared drive?
In the shared drive, okay.
Yeah.
I'm playing.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the school committee?
Yeah, no, no, I was in that, I just wanted to make sure that's what I was looking at.
Okay, perfect. So, we've encumbered any bills that we know are outstanding for the year, the cleaning bill, the bus bills, so we're actually in pretty good shape. One of the things that I'm always watching, I sound like the broken record, I think this is year three of this, is McKinney-Vento. So, just keeping an eye on that, I probably will come back to this committee with the budget amendment in the next month or two for that. You will also see the revolving account fund balances as of December 31st, 2023, the snapshot moment in time, just to give you a reassurance that these funds will not go into deficit. One thing I do want to point out is that if you look at the Kids Come First Fund, which is 2709, that fund started the year with a positive balance of 72,000, and we are now down to 15,000. So, expenses are definitely outpacing fees, so, again, this is why it was necessary to increase the fees just a bit. The other item on here to note is the McKinney-Vento revolving account, that is a reimbursement, it basically is two years behind, so that funding that we received is from the FY22 end-of-year report. So, that gets audited in February 23, and then the funds are released over the summer, or September. So, those came in at $130,843, and we have $60,786 left. When you look at that, and the McKinney-Vento in the operating budget, I project that we're gonna be about 185,000 short. So, we did get another grant the other day, brand new, probably the last 48 hours, to assist us with homelessness, with the costs associated with homelessness, so hoping that a portion of that grant maybe can assist us with bridging that gap. And the last document in drive are the grants, and as you can see, the writing is getting a little smaller as we keep adding grants, and next month, you will see the grant that I just mentioned for homelessness, and I think there might be another one, there's another one. So, these are entitlement grants, and they just come to us without request. Any questions?
I have one question. Okay?
Yeah.
Next time, we could use them on, in paper, so we can actually all see what's going on.
You want them printed? Okay.
Yeah, because nobody has a computer, nobody has it in front of us, so, let's go back to the old days, where we had the paper in front of us, and we could actually see what's going on.
Okay.
Thank you.
There was a desire not to print in the past. Okay. You don't want one, Mr.?
No.
Okay, does everyone, I just want to know, does anyone have a preference, paper, no paper, let me know?
Yeah.
Paper? Paper. Okay.
Yeah.
Four papers. Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, we have the school calendar. Mike, is this on the website?
No, I'm gonna put it, I wanted to share it with you, the school committee first, and then I'm gonna put it on the website.
Yeah, so we have, we have three choices for the school calendar. The first one, we start school August 2nd.
No, 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 stop, 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 stop. Let me do this, I'll do this, no, we, not August 2nd, sorry. The first, option one, and there's the keys really, and I understand that most people care about the first day of school for students and the last day of school and vacations. The first day of the staff being here would be Monday, August 26th, it would be a professional development day, we would then have three days, August 27th, August 28th, August 29th would be school days, August 30th, which is Friday before Labor Day, would be off, Labor Day naturally would be off, and September 3rd, which is a Tuesday, would also be off for everybody, because that's the primary election, so we would have that day off. We then go all the way through the calendar, through the Christmas holiday, which the December holiday would be, it would start the first day of the December holiday, would be December 21st, which is a Saturday, and the, let's see, I want to make sure I get this right, New Year's Day would be Wednesday, the 1st, and we'd come back to school on Thursday, the 2nd, and then Friday, the 3rd, and then go on. If we were to do that, then the early release date to end the school year would be June 12th, if we had no snow days, and it would be the 23rd, up to the 23rd, if we had the five snow days, depending on that. The second calendar option would be to, let me make sure I get this right, to start after Labor Day. If we were to do that, then we would use that first day of PD being the primary, and then we'd go right into school, we'd have the same, the Christmas vacation would be the same, I do want to mention, we'd also take in the, we also have a PD day on the voting day in November, because the schools are used. If we went with that, the last day for, the early, last day, early release day for the students would be June 17th, and it would be the 26th if there was snow days. And the third option was, we'd start before Labor Day, have the PD day on the Monday, go through three days, have the five-day weekend, the Friday, Monday, Tuesday. The only difference the third option has is that the December vacation week, we would not come back on January the 2nd, we would take the 2nd and 3rd off and have that two-week Christmas vacation, because it's a Wednesday holiday. I just put that in there as an option, and in that case, we'd get out on the 16th.
I'm ready to vote right now, then. Two weeks.
Chair, we don't start on the 2nd of August?
We do not start on the 2nd of August unless you choose to, but I just want to give you those options, and if any, I'll post it up on the website for you, you don't have to, naturally don't have to vote today, I did want to get it to you early, that way everybody can plan for whatever you need. If you have any questions or concerns, please reach out to me. If you need any other permutations of this, I'll gladly provide it, and I can make, if you tell me, well, what would it look like if this was the case, I can.
Yeah, no, in the past, what I'd like to, what I'd like to do is actually put it on the website, kind of get some feedback from the staff and feedback from parents and stuff like that before we ruin someone's vacation.
All right, what I'll do is I'll have it put up on the website, I'll email them right now.
I appreciate it, and it's up to you guys if you want to vote or you want to table it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I think, given the information that we have, and it being a little bit of moving pieces, also to make sure that the faculty and parents have, have time to read it, look into it, I'd like to table it until the next meeting.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I will also put it in the community newsletter as well as the staff newsletter.
Chair seconds, all in favor, table.
Aye.
Aye. Chair, moving on to the approval of bills dated February 1st, 2024, in the amount of $617,582.43.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of school committee open meeting minutes of January 18th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of a $20 donation to the Town of Saguas School Department Education Fund by anonymous donor. Not familiar who anonymous donor is, but he's a good guy. Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
No, I don't, I don't believe in anonymous donations to the school department, because it could come from anywhere.
Yeah, no.
It could be from Jeffrey Epstein, for all we know.
You had to say that after I made it.
I did, you know what? I just, I just don't like it, I don't think it's a good idea. It's 20 bucks, so.
Yeah.
I'll leave it.
Appreciate it.
Acceptance of $50 donation to the Town of Saguas School Department Education Fund by Dave O'Leary.
You could.
He did put his name down.
You could. Okay, motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
So, now we're gonna move to public comment. As I stated in the beginning, welcome to say what you want, but please be respectful, and we can't talk about personnel, so.
Chair, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
On a totally unrelated subject, just want to remind everybody that the play that's going on right now, BOTS, the musical at the middle school.
Starts at 7 o'clock.
Yeah, 7 o'clock, tonight, tomorrow, and Saturday, the kids do a phenomenal job, so, I'm hoping everybody gets a chance to get out there and see it. I'll be there tomorrow, and probably Saturday too, so, I just wanted to put that out there, because we don't want to forget about it, and Mr. Palmarini too, where is he, I saw him out there somewhere. He was, he had a nice interview on the news with the, for the robotics team, correct, Mr. Palmarini?
Does anyone actually listen to that radio?
I listen.
Hey, listen, it was, it was good publicity for you guys.
You were trending, you were trending.
Did you listen to it?
Absolutely.
I heard it.
It was great.
But, all right, I just wanted, because I know public comment's gonna be public comment, so.
So, on public comment, just state your name and address, and we can go from there.
Good evening. My name is Marissa DeMonte, 20 Warren Avenue. I stand before you tonight as a proud, third-generation Sargonian, who takes raising my family in Saguas and being a contributing member to our community very seriously. Myself, as well as many of my family members, have proudly graduated from the Saguas Public School system. My oldest son, who graduated in Saguas High in 2016, spent his entire school career in our district, and I currently have three more children going through the ranks. They are currently in kindergarten, 6th and 7th grade. My experience with the Saguas Public School District has been generally positive up until now. I began to alert the administration about the shortcomings regarding the education that my daughter was receiving in her 7th grade science class, dating back to late September. On multiple occasions, I emailed, made phone calls, and attended meetings regarding this teacher. I was not concerned because my daughter was receiving bad grades and blaming it on the teacher, I was concerned about the lack of meaningful instruction and advancement in said class. My daughter is a pre-academy student, who has received high honors every single term since she has stepped foot inside of Saguas Middle School. However, this class made her deeply anxious on a daily basis. This was never about grades, this was about a fair and adequate education. I was routinely brushed off, given false hope, and lied to by the administration. The three-page letter that I wrote to the school committee accurately reflects all of my grievances, so I will not go into detail here tonight. The last time that I spoke with the administration about my concerns was back at the coffee hour that was held during the November-December timeframe. Since that meeting, I had come to terms that my concerns were falling on deaf ears and not being taken seriously. I essentially gave up my fight after that meeting. It broke my heart to inform my daughter that I did my best to make change, but that I had come up short in my fight to help her voice be heard. I told her that she should continue to do her best, and I began to hope that she would learn something of value in that class this school year. That moment between my daughter and I will forever be ingrained in my memory, her look of disappointment will haunt me forever. It unfortunately took the events of last week to have relief from this teacher and the lack of education she was providing. My daughter is now far less anxious to attend school, and that makes me happy. However, I will never forgive myself for having stopped fighting for her education. Took the events of last week to light a fire within myself, to have my experience be heard, and to make sure that concerns like mine are not left in the dust again. My husband attended coffee hour on my behalf last Monday. From that meeting, it is my understanding that the administration admits that there have been lapses in the quality of instruction thus far, but thanks to curriculum assessments, they determined that both 7th grade science classes were meeting expectations at the same rate. I find that far-fetched, and I would like to know who facilitated these assessments, and when were these assessments reviewed last? The administration has done a disservice to these children. There were warning signs regarding this teacher during the first month of school, and it took the events of last week for me and others to be taken more seriously. It should not have come to this. As of today, and as far as I know, the administration has yet to formally address this teacher's firing, nor the name or qualifications of her replacement. I currently have no clue who my daughter's 7th grade teacher is, even though a replacement has already been assigned. I also find it deeply upsetting that the school has not offered any kind of counseling for the children regarding the dangers of drug use, or for their feelings about what they had witnessed. Both of my middle school students witnessed events that they should never have been subjected to. My 6th grader saw the teacher in handcuffs outside of the window, and my 7th grader witnessed a police dog and officers searching her classroom. This left them deeply concerned and upset. I received texts from them during school hours, many, many hours before the school addressed what had happened. The lack of counseling for the children, and the lack of communication from the administration regarding this event, is absolutely unacceptable. Tonight, I ask the school committee the following: Will counseling be made available for the students? Will the district consider offering after-school tutoring services for these children to help better prepare them for this year's science MCAS testing and beyond? What will be done to make sure that concerns like mine are taken seriously in the future? Will the administration be held accountable for their lack of communication and lack of follow-through? Will the hiring process regarding educators be reviewed and potentially adjusted? What will be done to make sure that our educators are utilizing the appropriate curriculum and being supported in their training of said material? In closing, it is my opinion that the administration completely and utterly failed to keep these children not only properly educated, but safe. I am incredibly disappointed in the way that my concerns were handled and disregarded. I, along with other parents, gave the district cause for concern regarding this teacher many months ago, and it took her arrest last week to ensure that these students receive a proper education. It should never have come to that. We are so very lucky to have this beautiful new school campus, however, we will continue to struggle with making change, sending proper communication, and ensuring the safety and proper education of our students. I have lost faith in our, I have lost faith in our administration, and I ask that you take a long, hard look into our policies to ensure that we are not put in this position again. Our children deserve a fulfilling educational experience, and I'm tired of the excuses. Let's work together to finally bring change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike, can we help with the assessments? Can we get her that?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can get, what I'll do is I'll, I'll get the assessments that were used, trying to think if there was anything else.
Yeah, we've talked about this for a long time, all of us, as a group, the communication that comes from certain areas. It's hard for me to say too much without getting myself in trouble, but I've been disgusted with it for a long time myself, and we've, we've talked about it. It's not just the incident that happened, it's the months leading up to it, and the signals that were there, the signs that were there, and the signs that were ignored, I hate to say it, but they were ignored. You know, we hear the same thing all the time, we hear, we just feel like, you know, this is blowing smoke up people's butts, hey, yeah, don't worry, we'll take care of this, we'll do this, we'll look into it, and it never gets done, we just hope it goes away, and it doesn't go away. And I hate to say it, but I'm really kind of glad this happened, because now it brings to the forefront what the real problems are, what we've all been talking about all this time. So, I'm really hoping that we get some answers on, you know, was there evaluations, was there some, some observations of the classroom, you know, formal stuff, not someone going by taking a peek, you know, because it's hard to miss stuff like that, it's hard to miss that someone's not using the curriculum that we assigned to that age group, you know? So, yeah, I would really like some answers, and I know the rest of these guys probably feel the same way. If I'm wrong, stop me, but.
No, no.
This is just like, this is like the spotlight.
Listen, if the administration failed you, we failed you, so, we, we get it, and go ahead. Oh, that's okay.
Wendy Megliozzi, 41 Summit Drive. I can't talk, I think, Marissa, you honestly, you spoke beautifully, like, I can't, I can't even say anything other than, I was only coming here to say, it's been one week that, and it was a story that the news felt that should be covered, and every day, I've asked my son, has anything been said? And he's like, nope, nope. So, my whole thing is kind of what you're saying, Tommy, there's an elephant in the room, there's an elephant in the room, and we need to talk about the elephant in the room, because these are 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, they're impressionable, you're now talking about Substance A, like, what's Substance A? So now they're all on their phones, well, what is it? Is it coke? Is it, so now you have all these young kids that are now looking up, well, what's a gram? What's this? You're piquing an interest, and we're not talking about it. Now, I'm okay having all the conversations I need to with my children, but if they're not being talked about, is some poor kid then, is that gonna be like, hey, well, I thought, I thought fentanyl was supposed to kill me, well, maybe I'll try it? Like, it was just a moment of, it was a teaching moment, it was a moment to be taught, and nothing was said, it was brushed under the rug. And I guess everybody, like you're saying, like Marissa's saying, everybody's getting tired of waiting, we're waiting, and a bunch of parents pulled together to fight for new schools, to go for this educational plan, and we're still waiting. So, that's all I want to say.
Listen, I'm, we all have these kids in these systems, I'm as tired as anybody of the excuses, I'm tired of it. In fact, I'm, it kind of makes me sick to my stomach, because I keep hearing the same thing, it's not just this year, it's been, every class that comes out of these elementary schools, and we hit the middle school, we keep hearing the same things. So, now the kids are up in the high school, and they just get kind of pushed along, you know, hey, here's the problem, let's move it this way. We need to start addressing things, and we really do. I know, Mr. Hashem, you're new on board here, and I know that's one of your top priorities, but again, we gotta start brushing things under the rug, and we really need to keep our foot on the gas of this one, you know?
And I do want to thank you, Mike, for your message, for alerting us, I do, and I want to thank you guys sitting all here, because I do understand what it's like, and so I do want to appreciate and say thank you to the people that have to be there.
No, thank you guys for coming out, because here's part of the issue is, without, without your stories, and while that, we're not completely filled in.
Carrie Hogan, 11 Maple Street. Aside from staff, I am typically the only other person to attend these meetings, and a majority of those meetings, I have participated in public comment in a casual manner, even cracking jaws. cracking jokes from time to time. After the events that took place last week, I felt it appropriate to prepare a statement in an effort to keep my emotions in check, because I can assure you at this time, it is no joking matter. I am furious at the number of failures that took place in order to allow this a dangerous event to occur. You see, this teacher was not only my, my student's homeroom teacher, but also her science teacher, as well as her teacher for extra learning block. When our student came home and explained that the police were at the school and arrested this teacher, we were shocked that there was an arrest, but not exactly surprised that it was her. We were told that the conversations amongst the kids was that she had been doing cocaine in the teacher's bathroom, although this was extremely alarming.
Excuse me, excuse me, you can't, this is getting into personnel, so you have to just be careful what you say.
Although this was extremely alarming, we were slightly calmed by Mr. Hashem's email, where he states that no time was the safety of the students or staff in jeopardy. It was not until the following morning that the true terror and rage consumed our home when Channel 10 News released the truth about what really occurred, that in fact, it was not cocaine but fentanyl, and that was not just a powder.
Excuse me.
It was on the news. It's on the news, it's public knowledge.
She's just repeating what the news.
Excuse me, excuse me.
It's exactly what it was.
It, it, it's got to be corrected.
And it was not just the powder in the faculty bathroom, but six grams of the most potent, poisonous, and deadly drug currently known to man in her classroom.
No, it wasn't.
This teacher chose to bring this into our school, and I would.
It wasn't.
I think it's important to note that she was caught by the students, and thank God our students were smart enough and brave enough to speak up. Quite frankly, those students should be recognized formally by the school and this committee for just that, their bravery. In fact, I think you could learn a lesson from them, seeing as this happened on your watch, under your approval, and under your comfort and complacency, but I digress. The Boston NBC News went on to explain that the judge ordered the doctor and I, the teacher, and I quote, "to continue substance abuse treatment which she was already undergoing." Already undergoing? Do you think this is good enough for our kids? Is this really the best that we can do? What is the point of being a town if we do not utilize the power of our selected form of government to deviate from the state in order to protect and ensure that those adults around our children are of the highest moral fiber? For example, shockingly, the state of Massachusetts does not require pre-employment drug testing for teachers. To most parents, that's alarming, especially since just about every single working adult out there has to comply with a pre-employment drug test at some point. You have the right and the power to demand this as part of onboarding, and yet it is not. Why? Mr. Hashem, I have been a huge fan of yours since the day you stepped in as interim superintendent, and I've been quite vocal about that. However, today, I stand here disappointed and furious. By law, you are required to prepare for any reasonable potential for harm. In our current climate, fentanyl poisoning is an extremely reasonable potential for harm. So tell me, do you truly understand how dangerous that amount of fentanyl, or any amount of fentanyl is? Do you know that the teachers didn't just put our student in, at risk, but the entire school? You should have sent the kids home on Thursday after the first visit from the cops, but you didn't. These kids get locked down for every farting thing, but six grams of fentanyl didn't warrant immediate evacuation? School should have been canceled on Friday, and the entire building should have been decontaminated. But no, the logical decision here was to decontaminate while school was going on. This committee seems stuck on remaining reactive instead of proactive. If you disagree, please tell me how many staff members are authorized to administer Narcan. If it can be, if it had been a loaded gun found in the teacher's, teacher's bathroom, there would have been an immediate lockdown, but the reality is, a loaded gun would have been safer. You cannot die by simply touching a gun, but by touching fentanyl is almost certainly a death sentence, especially for a child. See, my rage is this, you failed to formally, you failed to fully inform the parents of this town how high the stakes were and how close to danger our kids truly were. You took the ability of the parents to make a well-informed decision about the safety of our children. You said no one was at risk of harm, when in reality, the entire school was. This committee and the parents in this town must begin demanding better for our, our kids' safety. In the $34 million proposed budget, from what I can see, only $1,000 was allotted for school security. I've been fighting for over a year to get an SRO in our schools, and you, time after time, feed me a line and tote me along. Yet it was pretty clear in the last meeting that an SRO, SRO is not a priority. And just so we're clear, Mr. Chairman, an SRO's duty is not to correct bad behavior, it is to be a set of eyes on every inch of the campus to ensure safety, to be a go-to for the kids, a bridge between community and police, and God forbid, we find ourselves in an active shooter situation, then that SRO becomes a goddamn warrior. And I truly believe that had an SRO been in the school, this teacher would have thought twice about bringing these drugs into the school, had she known there was a risk of encountering an officer. The SRO could have been an intermediary for the students to speak up sooner, because the only people in the school that didn't know something was quite right was the adults. And yet, in just a few weeks, the school will be administering expert screening to 7th-grade students? Why are our children being interrogated about drug and alcohol abuse when you don't even screen their teachers for the same? I implore this committee and the superintendent to commit to a higher standard, standard of onboarding, to include pre-employment drug screening for all staff. And on behalf of the parents of this town, I beg of you to commit without waiver to the physical safety of our children, not by relying on grants or blaming the lack of funds, but by making SROs and school, school security a substantial and non-negotiable, non-negotiable line item in all school, school budgeting moving forward. Do better, be better, demand better, or we'll get someone else in those seats who will.
Anyone else?
As Mr. Federico's making his way up, I do want to point out one thing. They don't put on their resume that they're in, currently in rehab, or they're a drug addict or anything like that. So, it's next to impossible for anybody to look at someone's resume and say, oh, okay, this person's a drug user, let's not, let's not bring them in. Someone has stellar resumes, 20 years in, in a different district, you know, it's, it's hard to, hard to, hard to look past that.
She disclosed it wasn't a stellar resume. On Open House, that's not what she disclosed, that's not the footage she painted. She told us how she was hired five days before the starting of school, it was the first time she was in the classroom, and she had.
Who, who said this?
The teacher.
Go ahead, Mr. Federico.
She was in the first row.
Go ahead, Mr. Federico.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Frank Federico, 7 Kirkland Street, town meeting member. The only thing I ask of the board this evening is if we could possibly reconvene next week and ask Mr. Hashem to meet with his principals throughout the school, or even take it upon himself, to draw up a draft action plan, in which case, we can determine what actually happens if there's a substance found in the schools. Also, reassessing the hiring process. Are there gaps in our hiring process? Maybe we should take the time out of our day, reevaluate, and see if we can prevent this in the future, or at least mitigate it. I understand a week isn't a great amount of time, but at least, let's get the ball rolling. It may be something the school committee may feel is needed, especially, I mean, the parents are here, it's what.
We've, we've already started, we've already started that process.
So, I mean, let's bring it to the parents' attention, you know? It's, you guys all say, I mean, as Tom mentioned, I hear it all the time, but there's no follow-up. It's kicking the can down the road, and that can turns into a snowball and gets larger until we have somebody taken out in handcuffs. So, I'd like to, again, ask the board to reconvene maybe next week, and have a plan to present to the community.
Yeah, it won't be next week, we get sophomore, semi-sophomore fundraiser next Thursday, basketball games, we got a whole bunch of things going on just on that Thursday.
Or, I mean.
So, we can do two weeks, you know, like a regular meeting.
We can do, we get, you want to start it earlier or something?
But that's something we got to have the policy subcommittee.
Why am I here if you're saying that proms and basketball games are more important than that? That's the message that you're sending to us.
Carrie, with all due respect, okay, there's a whole class up there, a sophomore class, it's already been planned, okay? We meet every two weeks. We meet every two weeks. There is other days in a week, but who's going to meet? That's what I'm saying. We're going to pick something up in five days? Do you want something in five days?
Carrie, please.
Or do you want to wait? Do you want to wait for five days, or you want to get it right?
It's already in the week.
Right? Let's get it right, let's get it right. That's all we're asking, let's get it right. Okay?
We'll wait, we'll wait for you, sure.
Okay, well, you know what? We appreciate that, thank you. Okay? We'll get it right, and then we'll come back.
Please.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I have a big list of things to go over.
Sure.
But I'm not sure it's appropriate to talk about the celebrations that have happened,[1736.22]